Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome all of you to the April 11th briefing, and this is actually to brief the agenda for the Thursday, April 18th, 2024, next Thursday. We have no discussion items today. We do have a pretty lengthy agenda, and I'm happy to turn it over to our county manager, Dudley Watts, and he will go through the agenda items for next Thursday.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, board members and staff and guests. We do have a fairly straightforward agenda today. It may be the calm before the storm, before all the budget stuff comes in, but we hopefully can get through this fairly quickly. So we've got the items for April 18th meeting. We do have one matter for closed session under economic development, and so I'll go ahead and kick it off and get Chris Murphy to come up. He's going to talk about items one and two, which are related in some ways, but they're public hearings on zoning petition that we've received and a special use permit. So turn it over to Chris.
Thank you, Mr. County Manager. Good afternoon, commissioners. This is a petition, F-1639, is a petition of Tribam Investments LLC for a .42 acre piece of property located on the north side of 421 west of Dalton Road. It is a special use limited rezoning request or special use no site plan request from RS40 to limited industrial limited use. This is the subject property shown on the growth management area from the legacy plan. It is located within the growth management area five. You notice it is located in the rural area, which is GMA five there along 421 between the river and Lewisville. This is the subject property highlighted in yellow. It is there again, located to the west of Dalton Road on the north side of 421. Subject property outlined in yellow on the countywide aerial imagery. It is in an area that is currently wooded. This is the zoning sign looking north from US 421 into the subject property. This is looking west along US 421 towards the river, and this is looking at the subject property, looking back towards the northeast. You see the zoning sign there in the background, and that's the approximate, that is the property, and that's the approximate location where the request go, which is for a off-premise sign or a billboard. In analyzing this request, it is, a billboard is an off, an off-premise sign is within the business and personal service category out of the UDO. They have requested the limited industrial limited use for that single use. The site is currently inaccessible from any of the surrounding roads. Therefore, there is a special use permit that will be the next item that you'll hear that is necessary to provide access to this site. We did ask the county attorney's office if this would be considered an illegal spot zone if challenged, and their opinion was that it would not be because there is, I believe, some limited business zoning just located to the east of the subject property. However, given the site's location in the rural residential area, the growth management area five, the direct, the lack of direct access to the site, and the fact that the requested use is consistent with the recommendations of Legacy 2030 and the Western Rural Area Development Assessment, staff believes that the request is inappropriate. We made that recommendation to the planning board at their March 14th public hearing. There was one speaker in opposition, and they were concerned about the precedent that this was set, if it would rezonate and the potential visual clutter that would accompany outdoor advertising in this otherwise rural area. There's no other outdoor advertising within a 10-mile stretch. And again, keep in mind, I left the zero off that PowerPoint. Following the public hearing and discussion, the planning board did vote to recommend denial to the county commissioners by a vote of five to three. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chris?
All right. Moving on to the next item again that is related, and this is the special use permit. The petitioner is George Bambalas and AP Bambalas. I hope I pronounced that correctly today. I think I pronounced it incorrectly last week, but the request, their request is their, I believe that they are Tribam properties. They are the principles of that, and they are requesting an access easement over property that they own. It's an elected body special use permit, so they can provide access to the request of the rezoning that was subject to F-1639. Last week, I turned to the county attorney for a procedural explanation. I'm not sure if he has anything to add to that today. It is a special use permit, and it's quasi-judicial, but I'll defer to Gordon.
I believe you may have in your presentation the four findings of fact that are required, which you're going to go over, so I really don't have anything to add to that. But as Chris has said, because it's a special use permit, it is quasi-judicial, which means that for this item, you should not speak to anybody outside of the actual hearing next week. This is different from the other item, even though they're connected by use.
This is again the subject property shown on the legacy growth management area plan, located adjacent to the site we just saw for F-1639, again, in the rural GMA five area between the Yakon River and Lewisville. This is the subject property outlined in yellow. Again, the purpose of this request is to provide an off-site access easement for a use that's not permitted in the underlying RS40 zoning district. And again, that does require an elected body special use permit. Subject property shown on the countywide aerial imagery. Again, it is mostly wooded. I believe that if you see the site, well, here, the photos, this is looking north along Dalton Road, subject property to the left, looking south along Dalton Road, the subject property is to the right. This is looking east across Dalton Road, the subject property is behind this perspective, and this is looking west along Dalton Road, the subject properties on both sides. And again, this is an access easement. So there is a driveway that gets onto the subject property. And two, the billboard, should it be approved? And what this would do is place an access easement over this driveway that would provide a legal means of access to a use not allowed in RS40. That's the site plan. Again, it's basically a survey that shows the easement and shows the driveway location. These are the four findings that Gordon mentioned earlier. The finding related to will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located or proposed. It's our belief that this would not pose a threat to public health or safety. The second finding is that the use meets all required conditions and specifications. The finding from a staff and planning board perspective is that yes, this would meet that. The subject request meets all the UDO requirements if this were to be approved. The third finding deals with property values, and we are not an expert in that area, so we do not make a determination regarding that. You have to utilize any testimony that you'll hear at your hearing regarding that finding. Finally, for finding four, that location and character of the use that's developed according to the application and plan submitted and approved will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and in general conformity with legacy. Again, we're not talking about the billboard, we're talking about the access easement. So I think from our perspective that you could find on that finding that you could say yes, that it does meet the character and location. The access easement for use not allowed in underlying zoning is permitted use in RS40 with the issuance of a special use permit, which is the request that's before you. At the March 14th meeting, the planning board determined that the site plan meets all UDO requirements. Again, they don't have anything to do with the findings of fact because that hearing will be held here. The action that will be before you next week is to hold a public hearing and make a determination regarding those four findings, and based on what you hear in that hearing and decision you make, you'll either issue or deny the special use permit request. Again, as I think we alluded to last week, if you deny the rezoning before this, F-1639, they may or may not go forward with this. I don't think I would if I were the property owner, but they could still choose to go forward with the special use permit request. But again, if you deny that, they more than likely won't do this. If you approve it, then they'll need this to functionally make their site work, and there's a condition of approval related to that. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chris?
I don't have any questions on this one, but I do the first one. I think I saw in the minutes, you said there was a motion to deny.
Correct.
And it was unanimous, but in the minutes I saw were three voted in opposition to the.
If I said unanimous, I spoke incorrectly. It was five to three was the vote.
All right.
Correct. Yes.
I think it was unanimous, that it did not fit the requirements of the UDO. That was, there was another action earlier.
Yes, yeah, there is, basically, from an area plan perspective, that it did not meet the area plan, but again, you don't have to, you can still, you can make a finding in the negative and still find in the positive, and if you approve the rezoning, then the plan is considered amended, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. All right, we have several special resolutions. Item three is a resolution recognizing April 14th through the 20th. This is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. There'll be an opportunity to recognize the folks that serve that absolutely critical part of our emergency response, and Chief Hunley will kind of assist in helping us make those recommendations next, recognitions next Thursday. Likewise, item four is a resolution recognizing April of 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Forsyth County, and so Adrian Turner and some folks from social services and others will be there to make that recognition. Item five came to us from the discussion item that we had last week, and that is the resolution in support of the construction of a left turn lane at the intersection of Highway 66 and Watkins Ford Road. You heard John Ryan talk about that. He'll be available to kind of review that real quickly and make sure there are no further questions. I did not have anything on my list that was kind of a follow-up question around that, I don't think. So any questions on those recognitions or resolutions? All right, we've got the minutes, and they will be coming along.
They were sent out yesterday.
All right, thank you so much, Rosalyn. We have two items regarding grants. Item 12 is a resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources to apply for and accept if awarded an America 250 North Carolina County Committee grant to Forsyth County. Heather Bratlin is here. Come on up if you want, just make sure there's no questions. Heather did a great job of talking about America 250 opportunity and.
So, thank you, commissioners. Last week, you all approved the resolution establishing the committee, and we actually are meeting at 3 o'clock today to talk about the grant and what we want to apply to use the money for. So next week, I will have some additional information about that. But just as a reminder, the eligible activities are strategic planning, a public art project, a wayside, a local historic marker, an exhibit, whether online or a physical exhibit, research, educational outreach, event expenses, or archaeology. So the project would fall into one of those categories, and I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Any questions?
Yeah, I just have one question. Your committee members, they're established from the community and.
Yes, so the meeting that we're having today is sort of a small steering committee for the group. So we have representatives from the Historic Resources Commission, Muse, who's chairing the group, the African American Heritage Initiative, the African American Archive. We've contacted the Hispanic League. They can't make it this week because of their gala, but it's a diverse group. And then for our May meeting, we're going to invite all the stakeholders, which is all the municipalities, kind of all the cultural and heritage groups, really anyone who wants to participate. That is the goal. It is to be.
I heard a few.
Robust, broad.
I like it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Look forward to hearing the ideas.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Gordon brought it to my attention that I flipped pages too quickly, and so I jumped through some budget and finance items, so I'm going to jump back to those, and I apologize. Item seven is an amendment to the 2016 Schools Capital Project Ordinance. It appropriates interest earnings to pay for the yield reduction payment owed to the IRS related to the 2019 A and B General Obligation Public Improvement Bonds. It's a lot of words, but since it is tax time, it's an appropriate item to bring forth. So Lee Plunkett.
Thank you. Good afternoon. The item before you appropriates $174,407.98 in interest earnings from the bond-funded 2016 school CPO, and it's to pay the IRS a yield reduction payment as required by their codes 103 and 148. So these IRS codes cover what we generally refer to as arbitrage rebate compliance, and since we anticipate more of these payments in the future, I wanted to give a brief primer on what it is as we go forward. So at a very high level, when the county sells bonds, we receive those bond proceeds, and then we invest them to earn interest until we have to use those proceeds to pay our capital project bills. And at the same time, the county begins paying debt service on those bonds, which includes principal and interest. And the IRS says if the county earns more interest from those investments than the interest that we're paying, then we, than any excess amount, we owe back to them. Just again, at a high level, you know, it's there to prevent issuing more bonds that are necessary, issuing earlier than necessary, just to, they provide that tax-exempt cheaper bonds for us, and so they just don't want us to abuse it. So we generally refer to this as arbitrage, but the IRS actually calls for two different calculations. And so the first is the arbitrage rebate calculation, and that essentially starts from day one that we sell the bonds, and if we don't meet certain benchmarks in spending, then we could potentially owe this rebate. The second is an excess yield calculation, and this only kicks in after we haven't spent bonds past three years. So year, or day one of year four is when this calculation starts. And so the payment that I bring forth today is related to this second type of calculation. And so the, with the recent spike in interest rates since 2023, our invested bond proceeds, you know, have earned interest at a much better pace than we have in the prior about 13 years. So there hasn't been an issue. We haven't had to talk about it in over a decade, but now, since with the rate environment that we're in, this is going to be an ongoing issue going forward. And this particular payment is related to our 2019 General Obligation Public Improvement Bonds. And so I just wanted to be clear as well, talking with our arbitrage rebate calculation provider, which is Bingham, they do indicate that this is not any negative stance for us as far as our tax exempt status. It doesn't put that in danger. It doesn't automatically trigger any type of audit. It's essentially saying, you know, it's not fun to pay the IRS, but we're in a good interest rate environment, so that's a positive. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Straightforward. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Lee. And I just want to shout out to the Finance Department and to Lee and the leadership that we are complicated because of our debt leveling plans and all those types of things, and so there's a lot of work that goes into that, and it's really all been operating within a pretty strong plan. So thanks to those folks. Appreciate it, Lee. Item eight is an amendment to the fiscal year 2023, 2024 Budget Ordinance that appropriates $231,802 from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. It's Agreement Addenda 719, and I'll let Camila Pleasance brief us.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. Approval of this amendment will allow appropriation of an additional $231, sorry, $231,802 from the state to the Forsyth County Department of Public Health under Agreement Addenda 719, which is the Bridge Access Program, and these funds will be used to increase access to COVID-19 vaccines for those who are uninsured and underinsured. Any questions?
I do have an unrelated question, maybe you can answer. Are we still given vaccinations, and are they for free?
They are.
At the Health Department?
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Camila. Agenda item nine is an amendment to the fiscal year 2023, 2024 Budget Ordinance that appropriates $73,795 from North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, and Nicole Pretty will review this.
Good afternoon, commissioners. The Food and Lodging Section of the Environmental Health Program receives funding annually from North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services under Agreement, Agreement Addenda, sorry, 874. This year, they're receiving $73,795, and these appropriated funds will be used to support the activities of the Food and Lodging Section.
Questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Nicole. All right, Ayesha Carter is going to come up and review items 10 and 11. Item 10 is a resolution approving the Community-Based Juvenile Delinquency Substitution Gang Prevention Plan for fiscal year 24, 25, authorizing its submission for state approval, and then you've got a second revision to the current plan. So Ms. Carter will review.
Good afternoon, county commissioners. If not, okay. I can show it. Just. The Forsyth County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council approved the following recommendations for fiscal year 2024, 2025 for juvenile court services and delinquency prevention programs. There's 12 organizations providing 15 different programs or service types, and the funding also includes $15,000 for the JCPC administrative costs. There's only one new provider. The other ones are from fiscal year 2025, and that is the Arise Forsyth. The organization is called Creative Youth, and they are empowering youth through project-based media production. Any questions on that?
Any questions?
Yep, and I'll go into revisions as well. So for the revisions, on April 1st, JCPC met and approved a revision to fiscal year 2024 Funding Plan to release a total of $15,377 from two programs, YWCA's Teen Court Program, as well as the Insight Human Services Site Evaluation Program. Both organizations no longer needed the funding, and $3,800 was reallocated to Triad Restored of Justice, their Impact Circles Restore Program, and $11,527 to the YWC Work and Earn It Program. Any questions there?
I assume both of those can, with that amendment, can still be, is the deadline June 30th to spend those?
Yes.
And so they already have kind of in the queue, the awardees and so forth, that they know that they're going to be able to spend that?
Yes, they've done their third quarter reporting, and everybody's on track to spend their funds.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ayesha. All right, we took care of item 12 because of my error, and we'll jump to item 13, which is a resolution authorizing the execution of the necessary documents to receive funds from Duke University to conduct a four-year research study on the effectiveness of delivering automated external defibrillators by drone on cardiac 911 calls. You've got an adoption of a grant project ordinance that's related to that, and I think that, Randy, are you going to kick off with Sheriff Kimbrough, or, so whoever gets to the podium first, I guess, is going to kick off. We'll see what happens.
Good afternoon. It's good to see you all. First of all, I want you all to know, I really appreciate what you all do every day, what you've done for us across the street. I appreciate that. We're very grateful. Today, we just wanted to brief you on the partnership with Duke University Heart Association, as well as EMS and Emergency Management. And so basically, what it is, it's a relationship that began about a year ago with the drone of the first responder program that we've been doing for two years now. We were contacted by Dr. Starks of Duke University Research Center, said that they had received funding from American Heart Association to try to proof of concept, the first in the United States, by delivering a drone using AED, drone to deliver the AED. And so we sat down with them with Arrow X and decided, could we actually deliver this? Could we do proof of concept to see, could we deliver AEDs using drones? And so we began that concept, that conversation, and about three weeks ago, we were able to do proof of concept. And so we're here today to basically brief you, to let you know that Forsyth County, as always, we've been the first to do a lot of things in this region, but as in first in flight, this will give us a chance to do it, to be the first in the United States of this America to do that. And so I'm excited about it, and we couldn't have done what we've done this far without you all. And I want to publicly say I appreciate having you all as my commissioners, the love and support that you've given me. Sometimes we don't see eye to eye, but always, I love you, and I just wanted to share that with you and publicly say that. So I'll get out of the way and let them begin the presentations and the slide presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. A pleasure again to speak before you. If you remember, last year, I briefed you on our progress with Project Atlas, which is an air traffic control system for drones that operates safely within our county and the first of its kind in the nation. And you may remember that the county was generous to kick off this initiative with a strategic plan through Greater Wind Salem, Inc. and HOVCON, which was back in 2021. And we were fortunate to take that little bit of seed money that you gave us and that strategic plan and go to the legislature and. strategic plan and go to the legislature and be awarded $5 million to build the system out. And the purpose of this project was to serve as an economic driver for the emerging drone and advanced aviation industry, and attracting opportunities by creating a safe space to operate these drones and this technology. And so what we're sharing today is the fruits of that labor and developing relationships within our, within our community. So again, we took just that small seed funding that you gave us, that kicked this all off and went and partnered with Duke University and others, and went after an American Heart Association grant, and were fortunate to be awarded that. And because of that grant, we're excited that we can improve the healthcare outcomes of out-of-hospital cardiac arrest by using a drone to deliver an AED quickly to the scene of that incident. And so we'll go to the next slide here. And so one of the reasons Duke University, American Heart Association, was really interested in Forsyth County is because they were looking for a place that we could conduct these safely. And part of the reason we can conduct this safely is because we have the Sheriff's Office operating, but we also have this project that the legislature and the team here has helped fund, and so we can conduct this safely in our backyards. And so that's why, again, this is the one location in the U.S. that we can really see the benefits of AEDs being delivered with drones. And so with that, I'll pass the baton on to Kimberly with Duke University.
Before you leave, I have a question, if you don't mind, back recapping from August the 17th, when you brought this to us, I had a question relative to whether the area in the northeast ward around the airport would be encompassed in this, and you were working that out. So where are we with that?
So it is encompassed. All of Forsyth County is encompassed in this. So we were able to cite two radars, and those two radars, one will be in Clemmons and one will be near Union Cross Park, if you're familiar with Union Cross Park. Actually, there was an old radar station there, so we're putting it right back in that spot, same spot, hopefully. And so actually, the area that you're talking about is dual coverage, so it has, is even safer than the rest. It has coverage from both radars.
All right. Thank you.
Can I ask you one other quick question? I think, if I understand it correctly, you actually have the capability of covering about seven or eight counties?
Yeah, we're starting to, we're covering some of the surrounding counties as well, but our focus, when we cited them, was to cover, completely cover Forsyth County. Turns out, we made a good decision on the radars, and they can actually detect a lot further when we tested them than we thought, so we are pretty excited.
Can you refresh my memory on what the small seed money was?
I believe it was $375,000. That was in two tranches. I think the first was $150,000, and then the second would have been the remainder. Sorry. So, and that was in, I think both of those were in 2021.
And they, and they were actually awarded to the chamber directly.
Yep.
I just didn't remember the small amount.
Yep.
Trying to figure it out.
Any other questions? All right.
Hi, everyone. Kimberly Ward, I'm representing Duke University. So nice to meet everyone. So just to give you a little bit of background about out-of-hospital cardiac arrest, over 350,000 Americans experience cardiac arrests each year, and survival rates are actually pretty low, around 10% in the U.S. And that's changed very little over the past 40 years. Despite lots of work around cardiac arrest, survival rates are still really low. There's also a lot of regional variation in survival. So, you know, like I said, overall, around 8% to 10% in the U.S., but that varies quite a bit depending on where you live. So basically, where you live in the U.S. determines if you survive. It can be as low as 3% in Alabama, and in Seattle, it's as high as 16%. The University of Washington in Seattle's done a lot of work around cardiac arrest and has actually improved survival rates quite a bit in the city. So there's just a lot of variation, right? And our work is to kind of help close that gap so that more people can survive that have a cardiac arrest. Most out-of-hospital cardiac arrests occur in the home setting, and only about half are witnessed. So as you can imagine, someone being at home, you know, they could be at home alone or potentially be with a possible family member or someone around, or if it happens in a public setting. And every minute in delay in starting treatment is, you know, causes, associated with the 10% reduction in survival. So we're talking about something that very few people survive from, and you have to act quickly. So every minute matters, every second matters after a cardiac arrest. So just a little bit more background in it, bystander AD applications in the U.S. are pretty low. So, you know, we're talking about automated external fibrillators that, you know, someone in the public would be able to use quickly after a cardiac arrest. Again, those are low, and there's quite a few reasons for it. You know, some of the things is, you know, they don't always know where all the AEDs are, and so sometimes if, you know, someone calls 911, they might not be, they might not know that there's an AED around, depending on how it's tracked and where it's located. And so some of that kind of causes some of those, you know, issues with like AD applications. And sometimes, you know, if it's at home, there's not one that's anywhere around. And so basically, you're relying on first responders or EMS to come, you know, be able to defibrillate someone. And first responders get there faster than EMS, so it takes, you know, EMS, you know, at least somewhere around 10 to 12 minutes to respond. I mean, first responders can get there more quickly. The issue with that is that they don't always have AEDs. So we're, if we're thinking about, you know, across the U.S., you know, even across the county, there's volunteers that respond to cardiac arrest, and they don't always have AEDs on their vehicles. You know, and also, you know, the idea of like law enforcement being involved in out-of-cardiac, out-of-hospital cardiac arrest, you know, it's not systematic across the country, so, you know, it tends to vary how they respond to cardiac arrest. And so our thought with this is that AED delivery by drones, they help, you know, you know, close some of these gaps. So, right, you know, a drone can get there much faster than, you know, law enforcement or EMS. So if we can get an AED there quicker, and a bystander can, you know, apply that AED, we can help close this gap with some of our survival rates.
May I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
If you can go back.
Yeah.
So there's, I'm just trying to figure in my head what that looks like when they're delivering the AED device. I mean, is there instructions for that bystander to just kind of navigate?
Yeah, yeah. We can, yeah, we'll kind of get into some of that.
Oh, okay.
But no, 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 that's a really good question. So that's our, you know, they will call 911, the drone, you know, they'll still be on the phone with the person, the drone will be delivered, the AED will be lowered down, the, you know, the telecommunicator can direct them to, you know, go outside, get the AED, and basically, they could apply the AED. The AED itself tells you exactly what to do. So once you apply the AED, it gives you instructions. They're basically foolproof. So you turn on the AED, apply the pads, it tells, it tells people exactly what to do.
And if it's a Spanish or bilingual speaking person, how does that transfer?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, yeah. Chief Hundley might be able to speak a little bit more, you know, in terms of like.
I didn't mean to make it difficult. I'm just thinking, that's all.
Okay. So basically, the overall goal of this project is to be able to design and pilot test a drone delivery system, basically primarily suitable for rural communities that could help deliver AEDs. Rural communities are our focus because, as you can imagine, it takes much longer to get to the person. And like I said, every minute, you know, decreases your chance in survival, and so really trying to get there as fast as possible, and these rural communities are our focus. For this particular study, we'll start basically in Clemmons, but ultimately, our goal is to work more with rural communities because they really are where we think we can see most improvement. So we have two counties in the study. Forsyth County is one of our studies, and we're one of our counties, and we're really excited about them because they have a drone as a first responder program. And there's very few counties, actually very cities in the country that have this, you know. And so we'll be able to tap into that program and work quickly with them on this project. Our other county is James City County, Virginia, so that's the Williamsburg area. They're much more rural. Their entire county population's around 80,000, and, you know, they don't have a drone as a first responder program, so we're working with them to set that up, and ultimately, they'll be able to do this project as well. But a nice mix of two counties where Forsyth County is way ahead of everyone else in the country, and James City County, Virginia, kind of represents like where most of our counties are. And, you know, being able to have these two paths is really unique for us for this project. So here's just some of our collaborators. So, you know, our main funder, we're from the Duke Clinical Research Institute, so that's where I work with, along with Dr. Monique Starks, who's our PI of the project. We're also working with VCU. One of our PIs there has done a lot of work around drones, so brings a lot of expertise around that. And also, you know, being connected with the James City County population is really helpful. We're working with the University of Toronto. They do a lot of our optimization work that helps us, you know, determine where, you know, these drones should be, where they should be located, where's the highest concentration of cardiac arrest, and being able to optimally place them. Working with HOVCON, and as you have talked with Basil, so he's taken the lead on that. And then, of course, Forsyth and James City County, and we are funded by the American Heart Association. So we have a few aims for the project. The first two are basically all the work that we're going to be doing to kind of build and be able to run this drone program. So there's a lot of optimization work that has to happen. When I say that, you know, we're thinking about like, where do cardiac arrests occur? And like being able to look at those zones, because we can easily be able to see like where the, where the majority of cardiac arrests happen, and how do we place a drone in that area to, you know, have it in the best spot that's going to have the most impact on the community. There's, you know, a lot of other operational things that need to happen, you know, basically that question you have, like, you know, what happens when someone calls 911? There's a lot of protocols that have to be built around that to be able to deploy the drone. So that's a lot that's going to happen in aims one and two, which are basically the first two years of our four-year project. And then aim three is our later project years that'll happen, and basically years three and four, and that's where we're going to pilot test this. And we're going to see how effective it is. Does it get there faster than EMS? Does it get there faster than first responders? You know, are we improving survival rates? And we're going to do that in two urban and four rural communities. And this little graphic here just kind of gives you an idea of what it looks like. You know, if we're thinking, you know, there's someone who's had an out-of-cardiac, hospital cardiac arrest at their home, there's a drone station, it can get there within two to five minutes. Compared to maybe EMS, it would take 10 to 12 minutes, or a first responder from a fire station, six to eight minutes, so really reducing that time. And those minutes matter. They can improve survival rates by quite a bit by being able to get there faster. And so this is just another graphic of what it looks like. So basically, this is just showing that we, you know, our intervention is the drone AED delivery program, and then we also, our control that we're comparing it with is just standard of care. So the drone AED will not be operating like 24 hours a day, and so those times that it's not, you know, running, we'll be able to compare that. That will be considered our controls for the study. And again, the pilot study will span about 18 months. Chief Hundley, you want to talk about the cardiac arrest?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Specifically in Forsyth County, you can see really the things that stand out here on this slide are the AED application with 5.4% by bystanders and 45.9% by first responders, which is a great number. A lot of those first responder numbers are the fire department that provides those, or puts their AED on before we get a public access AED there, which is why this particular project is so important for us.
May I ask, Chief, while you're there, for comparison, do our local fire departments in Forsyth all have AEDs on their?
Yes, sir. And we're actually, the AED that we're targeting to purchase for this project is the same AED that the fire departments carry, which is also compatible with the LifePac cardiac monitors that we carry.
I figured that our professional departments do, and I just wanted to confirm that our volunteers do as well.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Daniel, to answer your question, most AEDs have pictures and lights on them that will flow around so that it will tell you what the next thing is. We do have, to the best of my knowledge, translation services available through our, through our 911 center, and when someone calls in, they can call a number and get translation. We do have a number of Spanish-speaking folks that work for the department as well, but so there's, it's not a perfect solution by any means, and to my knowledge, there's no AED that's made that, you know, says push for English or push for Spanish. But that's, but I wrote that down, so that's a good, that's a good piece.
But the AEDs we have, you can push, and it actually talks to you while you do it.
Yes, sir.
So it's telling you as well, as well as you can understand 1, 2, 3, 4.
Yes, sir.
And it also tells you, 1, push it, and tells you that stuff.
Yes, sir. There's an AED on the wall out there, and if you went out and got it right now, you could just press the on button, and it would talk you through everything you needed to do, without any, any training.
And it looks like it wouldn't take much to have that second button for Spanish. That's fairly, I mean, that's a fairly simple issue.
I might have to copyright that, but yes, sir.
Yeah, it's a fair question. We work with a lot of AD manufacturers, so maybe it's something that we bring up during our next meeting with them.
Are you going to talk about the app in the next section, the telephone piece?
Not the app.
You're just talking about, if I read the advanced materials correct, that you're hoping to get nearby?
Oh, oh, the point, yes. What was going to talk about?
Okay. Well, that's why I was asking, where are you going to talk about it? Otherwise, I was going to, I have a question about that, but go ahead.
No, it's definitely a good question, and definitely around AED delivery, so. So this map just shows basically Forsyth County, and this is just basically a heat map of where cardiac arrests occur in the county. And so based on our optimization work that I was talking about, you can see here that it takes about nine drone stations to cover the majority of cardiac arrests that happen in the county, which is actually a fairly, you know, fairly small number. This is actually similar to like what we've seen even in Wake County, that's a much larger county, having about the same number of drone stations. So for this, for this particular project, we are going to fund three drone stations. They'll have one drone each, and each drone station will have three AEDs. And the reason behind having multiple AEDs is, say, you know, maybe the drone's deployed, you know, the AED went out with it, the AED needs to still be retrieved there, and if another cardiac arrest occurs, you know, having multiple AEDs there that are available to go out as needed. And basically, within this line, you can see, like, if you can see these smaller lines, they're like within the three-minute zone, which is the circles around there, and those larger kind of more dotted lines is our five-minute drone coverage, and that's what we're trying to aiming to get between that three and five minutes there.
Before you go on to the next slide, do you happen to know the reasons for the two real hotspots shown in the heat map?
Just where people live.
So while you're here, one of the other questions.
Chief Hundley might be able to describe it a little bit better, just knowing the cardiac arrest data from the county a little better.
Yes, sir. That, that actually aligns with where our call volume density tends to be. So we run about, we're, we run about a cardiac arrest a day somewhere in the county. And so that heat map really does align with where our call volume in general is, for the most part.
Thank you.
I will just say that I'm a visual person, and probably having a video when you do the tests may be helpful for me. This is all great information, but to be able to see it, we saw some of the other drone activities with the Sheriff's Department and how they work, and that was helpful. But I think putting together some type of video once you do the test may be helpful.
Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, we had a demonstration date the other day, and I was thinking I should have put, I should have put that video in there so that you guys could have seen that.
I think we're actually trying to do another.
Actually, I'll look at that. Right. Where we're going to invite the Commissioners and do an actual test, proof of test that we did two weeks ago. We kept some of the video, but we decided, let's reconvene, have a meeting with you all, then we're going to do a video with you all.
And we can show you kind of the start to finish.
So basically, you know, our big primary outcomes for the study are going to happen in the last two years, which is pilot testing this drone. This is just the basic statistics, and we won't get too far into it, but basically, we only need about 10 out-of-hospital cardiac arrests to have at least 90% power, which basically just means that's a pretty good chance of making sure that you're actually detecting something that you see within at least, you know, four-minute difference. And the four-minute difference we're talking about here is, you know, how quickly can the drone AED get there compared to EMS or, you know, fire? Which one gets there faster? Another big thing that we're trying to look at is bystander AED application, and we're looking to increase that from 3% to 30%. So again, that national average that sits around, you know, 3% to 5%, increasing that to 30% Forsyth County, which would be huge. That would be a huge increase compared to like anybody else is doing in the nation. So that's primarily what we're looking at here. Sorry, Chief Hundley, I keep bringing you back.
So this just gives you a flow of kind of what we're doing and how this is working. So Sergeant Mullins with his team, along with Jessica Lowe, my communications training officer in the 911 center, has put together a pretty robust protocol, and we actually have it, will have it set up so that the drone pilot can tap into the 911 call that comes in, and they will be listening for keywords, you know, unconscious, unresponsive, not breathing, and they will not wait for the And they will not wait for the dispatcher to actually dispatch the call. They will hear those keywords and launch the drone based on those keywords. And we know we're going to have some false activations, but actually, that's part of the study. And so it'll help us better identify how we need to tweak this thing. But this is, this will be the protocol that we will push from a national perspective as we're writing this. Again, as the Sheriff mentioned, it's a first-in-the-nation kind of thing.
And this just gives you a brief overview of the data collection that we have for the project. Basically, just highlighting that, we're not increasing any burden for a lot of the personnel within Forsyth County. A lot of this data is already collected, data on out-of-hospital cardiac arrest, dispatch data, responder data. That's all collected already within the CARES Registry, which is a large cardiac arrest registry that's run out of Emory, that collects cardiac arrest data nationwide for quality improvement purposes. And then a lot of the drone operations will be collected directly from the software. And then we have a simulation study, which I'll talk a little bit about in a second, that we plan to do. So here's just our timeline. So just like I had talked about earlier, yours one and two is really where all of our planning goes in, developing all of those protocols, determining exactly where we're going to put our Drone AED stations. All of that's going to happen in the first two years. And then the last two years of the project will actually be running the drone, doing all the pilot study. There's also a simulation study that we're going to do, primarily because as you were looking at that heat map, you'll see that most cardiac arrests occur where people live, right? So in the cities. And so when we're thinking about that, the statistical part, which is the power calculation I was talking about, we're going to need to do some simulations in rural areas, because we likely might not have enough during the study to have enough power to detect a change. And so we'll have what's called a simulation study, which is basically where you recruit community volunteers. We basically run what looks like a normal 911 call to them, and the drone goes out, it lowers it, and they do, basically use a mannequin to simulate it. So we'll probably, we'll do that for the rural portion if we don't get enough cardiac So basically, our next steps are, the first thing we've been doing is just developing teams within Forsyth County. They have been wonderful so far, so much enthusiasm for Forsyth County, so much further ahead than we ever thought they'd be. I mean, we're very excited to work with you guys. The next is contract to DA, so that's why we're talking with you today, to get everything approved. There's some additional FAA approvals, and HuffCon will work on that, primarily with our James City County, Virginia, and getting everything set up with them. And there's also some site selection and things that we have to do. So those are all of our current and the next steps. Before I bring Randy up, the one thing I did want to talk about is our community engagement work that we're going to do. So there's a lot of work that'll happen with the community as well to make sure that they're aware that this project's going on, that they're aware that an AED can be delivered by drone, and so that they understand it, because that'll be a huge piece. Because if they don't know what's going on, they don't understand how to use an AED. Then we've kind of failed at that. So that's another piece that I didn't talk about.
And finally, part B of this item is a grant project ordinance. The total is $459,200 for the entire four-year project. We will spend it on $120,000 on four part-time drone operator positions. These positions will be incorporated as a part of the manager's proposed FY25 budget. And the remainder of the funds will be used to buy 911 live software so the drone operators can talk or listen in on the 911 calls. And the Sheriff's Office and emergency services will buy drones and AEDs. And then there will be a trip for some staff to review some best practices in Sweden. And then finally, I wanted to mention, there's $45,000 that will cover existing staff time through overhead. That will be a straight-up check to cover general fund expenses for administration of the project. And that is the last slide. Any other questions?
Questions, questions. I think, obviously, we've got some plans to do. But did I, correct me if I'm wrong, did I not read in the materials, I read in the materials about a way to involve more people who were trained, where there's an app, I thought that was already developed, and so when the call comes in, there actually is, if there are people out eating dinner nearby, and they're close enough in this circle that they could actually go because they are trained?
That's actually item 15.
Oh, is that a separate?
Yeah, it's pretty cool, so we can jump right into it if you want to.
But it can obviously operate in conjunction with this, right? I mean, could.
We are, we will be working on that. That's one of the things that Dr. Starks, who is the cardiologist that's heading this thing up, is very interested in, is how we can incorporate the PulsePoint app into this project overall. It is not part of this project, though.
Chief Hunley, go ahead and do item 15. We'll bounce around, because three of them are Chief Hunley, so.
See here. So item 15 is a resolution authorizing the execution of agreement with PulsePoint Foundation for us to purchase PulsePoint. And PulsePoint is an app that goes, you download on your phone, and there's actually two apps. There's the PulsePoint for just the notification of a cardiac arrest, and then the second app, which is incorporated with the first app, but it's technically two apps, is to tell you where the location of the closest AED is. And so as I mentioned, we have, we average roughly a cardiac arrest a day in the county. And we've got a pretty high, I think the number that was shown in the last presentation was about a 49% bystander CPR rate, but we know that a lot of that is also first responder-driven. And so this is an opportunity for us to actually get into the community, folks that are trained in CPR, that, just like you say, if you're sitting at a restaurant and your phone goes off and it notifies you that there's a CPR within a .1 or .1 or 2 tenths of a mile radius, that you, and you're willing to help, you can go, it'll take you right to it. GPS will provide you the walking path to get to wherever the patient is, and you can start CPR, bystander CPR, right? And we're really pushing hands-only CPR. That's where the American Heart Association and the Red Cross have pushed towards. But it will also tell you where the closest AED is if that AED is registered. We have about 600 AEDs that are registered in the county through our dispatch center, and so we will push to get those AEDs into the PulsePoint app.
That's coming from, the initial dispatch, if you will, that sends that out is coming from our dispatch, right?
Yes, sir. This app-
It's the same kind of thing that, once that's also, when that dispatch is being picked up in the drone centers, the drone's going to be sent there, and so at some point, that would actually be the same thing. If somebody responds, the drone would be on the way.
Yes, sir. So that's item 15. So we're looking-
But, I mean, big picture, this will happen much sooner than a drone.
Yeah, because I understood the app's already available, it's finding people, getting people to do it, it could be immediately available.
Yes, sir. This resolution is asking for the $10,000 to get the application up and running. The PulsePoint Foundation has agreed to comp us the fee for the rest of the fiscal year, which is two and a half months away, but that's two and a half months we don't have to pay for. And then we've got it built into the manager's budget.
Is it 911 eligible?
It is not.
It is not, no?
Yes, sir.
It should be.
They're working on it, actually.
It needs to be 911 eligible.
And how will that get recruited? Because that was a part of the, just like we heard about the marketing at the end of this last item, how does that, so that people will actually download that app? And is there a registry of people that are CPR certified, or some way to contact, some way to get that?
So we will beef up our own marketing. I've been working with Ed McNeil's group on this kind of stuff, on what we're trying to do here. PulsePoint Foundation provides a bunch of marketing material for it as well, and we will load things up on our website. We'll do the Mr. Longworth Show, we'll get on the radio show and talk about this at the radio show. And then the other thing that we're really trying to do is step up our own community outreach and training. I know Winston-Salem Fire Department, they have a community training branch, and so anywhere we can get this into the folks that are actually out there doing the community first aid CPR training, we will make sure that we get them information to let them know that-
They could choose to download it, and that's obviously a group of people just trained-
Yes, sir.
-and hands-on CPR.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think it'll become a part of that, when you go get certified in CPR, you'll have a choice if you want to be part of that network or not. It has profound possibilities. It's pretty cool.
Yeah, no, that's good. That's great. Thanks, thank you all. Sheriff, thank you for stepping up there with the, all of a sudden jumping out there, and then all of a sudden, there are more applications coming.
Sorry, we couldn't have done it without you all.
Go ahead and answer, and then I'll recognize Commissioner Best.
We couldn't have done none of this without you all. You all funded a lot of our deals that we originally started, everything from the Arctic to the drone, even to the app that you're talking about, the 911 app that allows you to hear before the call is dispatched. You all have funded all of those innovations, and because of you, we have the chance to change the atmosphere as it relates to cardiac arrest. And when I saw us do the first proof of concept, the whole county team was working together from EMS to Damon's team to Ed McMahon, when we was brainstorming this, talking about how we're going to push it out to the public. It was exciting times to think that this county and all of us are going to be responsible for bringing this the first to the United States. And so I thank you all for your time. I appreciate you. Always good to see you. Love you all, and thank you for your support.
Feeling better about the investments, Sheriff.
Appreciate that, Doc. Thank you.
Commissioner Best, go ahead.
Thank you. This, the fact that we have had two separate presentations on approaches to dealing with out-of-hospital cardiac arrests, just in the course of this half hour, takes me back to my question I asked a moment ago about the heat map. It seemed to have hotspots that were more specific than just population density. I think it would be useful to have that map superimposed on a municipal, more detailed map of Forsyth County, to see if there are other factors that can be identified that some of our folks could suggest other useful approaches to-
Yeah, and some is clear, I was guessing age is probably at least one of those. I'm thinking kind of what I would think, general age of populations in certain areas. I mean, that's exactly the first thing that came to my mind.
You know, it seems possible that those two hotspots were associated with the largest retirement facilities in the community.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Concentration of those. If so, then that would suggest a particular line of approach. But if there are other factors involved that we can identify from comparisons-
There are a couple of other things that the PulsePoint app will bring to us. So ideally, we would be able to store or to place Narcan with our AEDs, and we would also be able to place tourniquets using the Stop the Bleed program with our AEDs, so that if anything like that happens, when you call 911, that information is with the dispatch center, and they know. So you're not wrong, the heat map is, it is tied to really more the retirement communities. And we know that 72% of our EMS calls are inside the city of Winston-Salem. So that's part of what you see on those heat maps. And then Clemmons during the daytime, and up off the University Avenue, doctor's office, where the doctor's office is, and around Medical Park, around the hospital complex, that's where we get busy.
And all of it will be captured in real time.
So Joey, if I may ask, I'm just expounding off your question, because that's a great question, and it leads me to my specific question about northeast Winston-Salem. So this project is being tested out of Clemmons, correct, first? And that's through 2027?
Four years.
Four years, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And then it will be readily available for Forsyth County as a whole?
So part of, and-
Because in the map, that's-
Right, so what we're doing, what we're looking to do is proof of concept, as the Sheriff mentioned, with Clemmons, and the drone is a first responder program in Clemmons. But we do have written into the agreement that, once we establish some proof of concept, part of the rule proof might actually be trying to run this out of the Walker Town area, or that side of the county, I'm totally drawing a blank on. Rule Hall, thank you.
So once we, we've done the proof of concept, so once we actually ironed some of the kinks out, we were going to do it simultaneously, not just in Clemmons. We wanted to do it somewhere else as well at the same time. So Clemmons is where we're doing the proof of concept. We'll be way out in front of six months to under a year in doing it simultaneously in other parts. Originally, we talked about Rule Hall and Walker Town. Those were some of the areas that we originally talked about.
But you did talk about, you've already done at least one proof of concept that-
So what we did was, we looked at, myself, Mr. Hunley, Duke staff, we met down at the Innovation Center, and we actually looked at the drone that we're going to use. We actually did a few flight tests with the ADD, excuse me, AED attached to it to see how we could do it, any type of kinks with it, just to see, could it be done? And we did that. Was it two weeks, two Saturdays ago, three Saturdays ago? We all met down there to witness it. I should have brought the video with me. That's my fault, I just was waiting to get it all worked out to present you all, and let you all see it first. But we have plans in the next upcoming few weeks. We'll be out in San Diego, looking at some different types of drones, to come back and do a start-to-finish, A to B, let you all see it first, and do a full media coverage with it, displaying it. As Mr. Hunley said, we met with Ed McMahon, Mr. Pratt, to basically see how, using also some of our PR, another good investment, to actually push this out to the community as a whole. And actually, we talked about doing what we call library stops, to where we were going to go around to all the libraries throughout the entire county and do what we call information sessions, to talk about what we're doing, and actually push it out with public announcement as well as television marketing.
Good. The last question. There was a mention of this being the first in the United States, but I gathered from just a comment about Sweden that popped into the narrative, is that would not be first in the world.
That is correct.
Correct.
So this is being done in Sweden?
The only place in the world it's being done is Sweden. And that's how, when Duke University and the researchers looked at who else is doing this in the world, Sweden was the only place it's doing it in the world. And we've been on joint calls with them, seemed like every week, talking about how to improve some of the things they're doing. As Mr. Hunley said, talking about, you know, the sky's the limit from not only AED but Narcan. So they decided, meaning Sweden, the Duke researchers say, hey, we need to take a group of people to go, and as you say, I can hear you, but to see it, to let's see how we can do it more effectively and efficiently. So that's how the trip to Sweden came up. They said that they would fund it. I think Mr. Hunley, two other people are going.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Can I just say, please don't take this as a negative comment, because I think it's very exciting. My biggest concern are the elderly, and particularly couples who've been married for years and years, and suddenly one of them are having an attack. I think the emotion comes in frightening, it's such a frightening thing. So I think that concerns me the most, if you all can kind of look into that.
Yes, ma'am. Of course.
And speaking, I can speak that as the elderly.
Thank you all. Are there any other questions? But otherwise, thanks a bunch.
Thank you.
All right.
Chief Hunley does have two other items on this agenda. Item 14 is resolution authorizing the execution of agreement with EMS Management Consultants Incorporated to provide medical billing and collection services for the Forsyth County Emergency Medical Services. Chief Hunley.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. This resolution is to renew our billing contract for three years with EMS Management Consultant Incorporated. As you know, they are a local company. We put out an RFP earlier this year, and we've got five respondents there. They're all listed in the resolution, and EMS consultants came back as the lowest overall. And in fact, we're the lowest in the areas that everyone competed with them in most cases. So we're putting forth a resolution recommending that you award contract to EMS Management Consultants.
I have one question and one comment.
Yes, sir.
Comment first. I want to thank Deputy Manager Damon Sanders-Pratt-
Me, too.
-for putting that information in the format that I was going to be asking you about today, and he anticipated that and brought it in, and I really appreciate it, that was good. And the one question I have is, how does this low bid compare to what we're currently paying right now from the bid last year?
It is consistent.
Is it more or less?
I think it's slightly less, less than what we're paying now. Yes, sir. Say that again? Quite a bit less, says Carboy.
Well, that's kind of what-
Let's get, we'll get a exact, you know, it's based on how many calls, but we'll try to get that-
I understand that, I understand that. Thank you.
We'll get that to you. All right, and then item 16 is also, Chief Hunley, it's a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with Municipal Emergency Services Incorporated for the purchase of turnout gear for the EMS units.
Yes, sir. This, or yes, this is, this actually stems back from 2022. Commissioners at that time voted to put forth $148,248 for the EMS department or emergency services to purchase 58 sets of turnout gear. And so I will totally take the hit that that has slipped through the cracks and we are just now coming around here and, and getting that up on the agenda. So we, MES is a state contract award. The gear that we're trying to replace is at end of life. It's got a 10-year lifespan on it. And so this money, this is essentially, we're, we're asking for the money to buy what you've already approved us to do.
Yeah, basically, it'd been funded and so.
Yeah, it was funded, reverted, and now.
We funded it in a Pago item a while ago.
It was like August of '22. It was even before I got here.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Has that Pago item been zeroed out?
Will be as soon as you take an action.
Oh, I see, in other words, it's just, there's no additional money. It's using what was already there.
Yep, carried it forward.
I got it.
Is this, is this, I'm sorry, I thought this was through ARPA. Is this not the ARPA equipment?
ARPA money.
Yeah, so it's not Pago. It's, it's in the, it's in the ARPA fund.
Thank you, Kyle, for correcting me. I knew it was not, it was a, what, inside the budget.
It's not requiring additional money.
Yeah.
I got it. Any other questions for Chief Hunley? Thank you.
Great, thank you, all right. Item 17 is also in the arena of public safety. It is a resolution awarding a contract for inmate healthcare delivery services for the law enforcement detention center to NAF Care Incorporated. Randy Hunsucker, the sheriff's business officer is going to review, and I believe Captain Petty Cord saw you somewhere, might have a role in this one, so.
Hey, good afternoon again. This is a very brief presentation. I wanted to mention to help answer any questions you have. Joining me today is Major Henson with Detention Security Operations Type Questions. Denise Price is here for behavioral health questions. Bowery Stewart is the jail health clinical monitor in Public Health Department. And then also from NAF Care, the onsite medical unit administrator, her name is Ann Correll. So she'll, they'll help me answer questions today. We had to first acknowledge the outstanding group of individuals across many departments that assessed the proposals that came in from the service providers. This is a lot of extra work to, to review these very large documents, and they did an outstanding job. So thank you to all these folks here. Real briefly, jail medical services are governed by state law and the administrative code, and there are the citations that you can check out. For the past 20 years, we've had just two providers, NAF Care from 2004 to 2009, Well Path and Correct Care from 2009 to 2021. The board awarded the current contract to NAF Care in 2021. And we're at the start of, at the end of a three-year term. It did have the possibility or option to extend three more years. But really, the, the industry, the market has changed so dramatically with inflation, labor shortages, that that was just not sustainable. So we rebid it out to make sure we're getting the best prices. Because we're really seeing some huge increases in healthcare labor cost. We're, I've been told from the NAF Care that they have seen a 20% increase since we executed the current agreement. Healthcare labor shortages are persistent or, and will continue. According to national trends, we're looking at a 7% increase in healthcare costs this year. We're also still seeing growing mental health demands, increasing costs for pharmaceuticals. And then finally, sort of the newest thing that we're seeing is, is increases in oral and dental health issues, possibly due to meth use, but also because inmates are staying longer at the facility and there, it's tripping that they have to have an annual exam. So there's some more hours you'll see later. But we're trying to do some cost controls as well. We have higher credentialed staff from the, from the service provider to reduce those off-site trips to local healthcare providers like specialty units or the hospital. And that also prevents detention officers from having to go off-site as well. Early identification of mental health and substance use, issues. And the NAF Care uses, uses an in-house pharmacy so they can better manage those costs of pharmaceuticals. As far as the process, in September, we sent a request for qualification, RFQ, out to 10 providers directly, and five provided qualifications, responded to it in October. One communicated they would not participate in the process, and that was Correct Care, Well Path. The top three qualified providers submitted cost proposals at the end of December. And the assessment team, what we were looking for was the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, but we weren't going to take into consideration levels of servicing clinical practice. Real quickly, these are the vendors who, and where they're from, that submitted proposals. Armors in Miami, Qualities in Indianapolis, Medco's in Richmond, NAF Care in Birmingham. Advanced is also near Nashville, along with Well Path, and they declined. The assessment team looked at past performance and experience, including reviewing for the vendors we've not used and don't know that much about, some reference checks. We looked for demonstrated understanding of what we were looking for. There were 21 technical requirements, some examples of those with our staffing plan, their pharmaceutical medication distribution plan, their mental health plan, and there were many others. And real quickly, the, the contract that we'll be considering today has several parts that are going into the cost. There are several fixed costs. The first is to man, and the biggest part of it is to manage and operate the onsite medical unit. The second thing is to, any inmate that cannot, if they need services that they can't handle onsite or taken to a local hospital or some other special unit, the contractor will administer, pay those bills, look at those claims for us, or a third-party administration. The next one is the variable costs. And this is one that the, the, we, the vendors do not control that. This is a county decision. We provide, we estimate what we think the off-site costs are going to be. The counties share. We pay 50% of the costs. And then the final, the final elements there are the new behavioral health unit, which is for the men, and the women's intervention program. Those are, will be annually looked at, pending outcomes and funding.
If I may ask a question, I'm right here, relative to Medicaid or any other insurances. Are they filing for these insurances? And what happens when our inmate residents have insurance and they're not utilizing it towards?
Usually, you know, they will, they would lose insurance if they stay in our facility for a certain amount of time. And we are going to continue having conversations with the vendor about filing for the Medicaid funds. That's something we're, we're looking at with them as well, yes.
All right, thank you.
Gordon, do you want to respond to, the Medicaid issue's been a huge issue and.
It, it has been, and, and what Randy said is absolutely correct. As you may know, from going to NACO conferences, when someone, even someone who has not been convicted, when they go to the jail, they automatically lose Medicaid coverage. In the past, it was almost an academic issue for us because so few of our population had Medicaid. But with Medicaid expansion, it may become an even bigger issue for us. And so that's an issue that, that many of you commissioners and us staff have been advocating for this exclusion to, to not apply, or even if the exclusion to apply, applies, for folks to be restored quickly to Medicaid when they're released from the jail.
All right, thank you.
I wanted to briefly talk about those off-site costs. Different local governments handle it differently. You could arrange a contract so anytime an inmate goes to a local hospital or some other facility, that service provider pays 100% of the cost. There, there are pros and cons of that. It's going to be, they're going to charge you more for that. However, what the concern would be is that, that service provider would try to save money and not send anybody to the hospital when they should. So that's something we, of concern. On the flip side, if the county covered 100% of those charges, well, then they might send everybody to the hospital, which is not a very good outcome either, exposing us to unlimited claim potentials, catastrophic ones. So for this past several years, I'm not even sure where it first originated from, is to have equal skin in that game, 50/50. It seems to work very well, we think.
So one more thing I'll add. I thought that the sheriff's department was working with the healthcare providers in, with regards to releasing or putting them on home arrest rather than having them into the center. How is that coming along?
I'm glad you brought that up. You know, we did attempt to, several years ago now, to do electronic house arrest program with the sheriff's office. However, when it was implemented, I think the main issue was the judges were getting a lot of pressure to put youth on those monitors. So it's something, we didn't end up controlling that. So that was a problem. But I think you raise a very good issue that I think that probably needs to be looked at kind of more globally, countywide. It's something that, that everybody has to be on the same page about. But I think that's something that needs to be talked about 100%.
Thank you.
The, the slide is the assessment scores and the costs. These costs exclude the off-site claims. NAF Care received the highest score, about 102. The highest potential score is 110. Medco was second, Armor, third. And Advanced and Quality were well behind. And looking at all the, the costs that they proposed, the lowest bid was NAF Care at $24.7 million. The next highest was Armor, $25.3. It was about $600,000, $700,000 more there. And Medco at $27.8 million. And that's the three-year cost. So the assessment team recommends NAF Care because they had the highest success score and they were the low bid.
What is our annual, so, what are we paying now excluding the off-site?
Oh, thank you.
You'll, you'll see this in.
It's in here later, I didn't see, I didn't see it.
It's driving about a half million dollars worth of new cost in next year's budget. And it's a, it's a big driver of next year's cost budget in the sheriff's department, so.
I, I will say this, I've, I've had to approve a lot of agenda items, and I will just say that I'm, although I have lots of questions, all, most times, I will say that I appreciate NAF Care staffing and how they treat our detention residents in terms of the healthcare and behavioral health. So I'm happy to see that them continuing the services, if that's something that we decide on. But I just wanted to just publicly say that.
Yes, ma'am. This slide here is the NAF Care staffing plan. And as I mentioned earlier, there is a slight increase in those dental hours, almost a half of an FTE there. This will be the staffing for the, the men's behavioral health unit, 3.8 FTEs. And there'll be two full-time positions for the women's intervention program. In the agenda item that you're considering the award for, it is for a three-year fixed cost for the onsite medical unit of $19.5 million. As Deli mentioned, if you analyze the current, it's about 15 points, 15.75 million is what the last three-year contract was for that, as a 23% increase. The claims administration is $2.8 million. The last time that was, three years ago, was about $2.58 million. That's about a 10% increase there. Here's the good news on the next one. For the off-site claims, we're seeing with NAF Care that we can cut that down by about a half a million dollars. So that's a 23% reduction in cost there that, that, that's working. Then finally, the, the behavioral health unit, the three-year cost is $1.3 million. The cost for FY '25 in the next year's budget is $431,000. And for the women's intervention program, the three-year cost is about a million, and the cost for next fiscal year will be $327,000. And that is the end of that presentation. So, and I've got others here to answer questions if they're clinical or security or.
So Randy, if I missed this, it's just me, so it's me asking the question. I haven't ever seen any of the deliverables relative to their worth of work. So I just would like to know if there's some report or something that you can share?
Okay, yeah, we can probably provide some until you're on regular basis.
Especially for behavioral health, we just want to make sure that our investment is aggressive.
And we do, as far as some performance data for the men's unit, I'm not sure how often the budget office sends out the quarterly performance data. We do have some behavioral health unit ones, measures in there, tracking suicides, attempts, and some other things. So that's one location for, but if that's not enough, we can certainly do more.
I would like it, thank you.
John Till's done it, a couple of, kind of graduating, I mean.
Yeah, I have definitely been to several of the graduations along with Denise Price, and I know a few of the commissioners have come. And they're, I'm going to get her title wrong, but the NAF Care Behavioral Health Director did come and present to the commissioners. It's been a few months, but it hasn't been that long ago. So we can repull that presentation and then also provide more regular reports on that. But we are seeing great success in the men's behavioral health unit. The women's just started in July and is a pilot, but from everything I'm hearing, so far, so good.
And we've got those coming up on the next agenda cycle, and perhaps we can, I know we can't really show pictures, but my understanding, and I've not been to the, but the graduation is a pretty profoundly emotional.
Yeah, they are, really good.
Very.
I, I just want to ask a money question and reconciling that. So the, the anticipated off-site cost, you're looking at that being the, the good news, which was a budget reduction of about a half million. Is that kind of offsetting the anticipated half-million-dollar increase in the base, base contract?
That's correct, yeah, that's coming off.
So, so we're, we're actually not, it's not going to be, I just want to make sure I'm not mishearing this.
I had, Randy, what I had was the net increase NAF Care piece with women's behavioral units was costing us, you're, just looking at budget drivers for '25 was $884,147. We're going to be able to fund some of that women's unit, we believe, with some behavioral health dollars, which will help us, and so.
And that's a new cost.
Well, that's just whatever the cost is because it's been rebid. And so when you boil it down, the net cost after all that, it's about a half million dollars in new.
And the women's intervention program, the, the last time was not a full year.
Yeah, right, that's what, I knew that. So this will be the, the full year.
I mean, but we're.
But we're still talking a half million, and, and he's talking about the anticipated off-site being our share, being a half million less. That's where I'm getting at.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, all, you wrap all that up, and that's what you end up with, yeah, so.
It minimizes itself.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and the other thing I'd say is, because Randy did a good job, he, you know, NAF Care did have a three-year extension. We couldn't come, we couldn't, I couldn't get our head around the numbers that they were coming back to us with. Randy took it and put a great team together to, to bid this. This is not a simple.
I know that, a lot of work.
And he's gotten pretty good at it because he's done it in the career three, four, five times, probably, against a lot of different dynamics. But, um, but bid, had we not bid it, we would, we have a much better feel for where we are having, having gone through, bid that. And thank you for that work and your team because it was a lot, so.
Ditto that, yeah, thank you.
It was a lot. Randy, come on back up because item 18 is yours. You get to go from healthcare to bullets. Here we go. It's a resolution approving the purchase of law enforcement ammunition under an exception of bidding laws codified and.
Actually, we're actually going to be Captain Petty Cord on this one.
Okay, Captain Petty Cord, great.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chairman, Mr. Watts. Kind of start with why we're ordering from Kiesler Police Supply. I'll go back to June of 2022. Vista Outdoors owns Spear and Federal Brand ammunition. And Vista Outdoors and Safari Land, who also own Lawman's out of Raleigh, and they had the state contract for that ammunition at the time, they had some conflict, business conflict. Vista Outdoors decided to pull their distributorship so they could no longer sell that ammunition. So Kiesler Police Supply was given, in their sales territory for law enforcement, was given to the state of North Carolina. They made an agreement with the state that they would honor state contract pricing, even though they're technically not on state contract. Nobody is on state contract right now, and it has not been bid out by the state yet. They're supposed to bid this out, my understanding, yearly, and it has not been bid out in probably about four years. So that's, you know, we're kind of at the mercy of the state. Even if we went to another police supply that sells this brand ammunition, they're going to tell us, we can't sell to you because Kiesler Police Supply is the distributor for the state of North Carolina now. So we're kind of at their mercy. They are honoring state contract pricing, so that's, that's, that's kind of, what's that?
Oh, the previous state.
Yes, yes, the old state contract pricing. And, and just to kind of throw out. Yes, yes, the old state contract pricing. And, and just to kind of throw out, one of the reasons why we're trying to order so much right now is there's going to be a cost increase July 1 of about 4% to 7% is what we're being told. And that's not just this brand ammunition, that's ammunition across the board. Since COVID, there's been a 34% increase in the cost of ammunition. And it just, it's a sign of the times.
Okay. Any questions? It'd be good to see what the state does when they do bid it out, and hopefully that pencil gets sharpened a whole lot. And I think it will.
Yes. Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Petty Court. All right, we're heading to the back, the end of it. Item 19 is a resolution ratifying a payment for automotive repair work and remount services to NWEV LLC. Kirby.
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Board. Appreciate the opportunity to bring this item before you today. As background on the item, ambulance unit number 14 was involved in a serious motor vehicle accident in March of 2023. As a result, the unit was undrivable and the chassis was damaged beyond repair. The ambulance box, however, was relatively okay. And the fleet manager determined that it could be remounted onto a new E450 chassis. So after completing an assessment of that ambulance unit, General Services determined that the repair cost would exceed the $25,000 threshold for an insurance claim. As a result, we worked with the county's previous risk manager to submit a claim to the county's insurance provider through our third-party administrator. Since the repairs needed to unit 14 were very similar to what we would do with a traditional ambulance remount, we contacted Northwestern Emergency Vehicles for a repair estimate. That provider was contacted since they're currently under contract to provide ambulance remount services through Fiscal 24, and they quoted the repair work at $128,888.99. That price is roughly $20,000 less than the Fiscal 24 cost for a remount, and that's because there wasn't the work needed to the ambulance box. The county's previous risk manager forwarded all of that documentation to our third-party administrator, and General Services was approved to proceed with the repair as an insurance claim. Ambulance unit number 14 was repaired and returned to service on February 2 of this year. After we inspected and accepted the unit, General Services forwarded all that documentation to risk management, and we paid our $25,000 deductible directly to the provider. Due to some confusion between our third-party administrator and insurance provider, the remaining balance of $103,888.99 went unpaid through no fault of the provider. So in consideration of those circumstances, the county manager authorized payment of this amount in order to remain in good standing with the county's ambulance remount service provider. Since that payment was issued last week, Travelers Insurance Company has approved the claim and offered to resolve it for a total amount of $63,867.99. That amount represents the value of the 2016 chassis at the time of the accident, as well as the cost to transfer the ambulance body to the new chassis. So in summary, while there was some confusion during the process on the part of the third-party administrator, the claim appears to be resolved, and ambulance unit number 14 was repaired and returned to service in a timely manner. So this resolution requests that the board ratify the $103,888.99 payment authorized by the county manager to Northwestern Emergency Vehicles, NWEV, for the repair of ambulance unit number 14. And so there's a little bit of a story there, obviously, and I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
I've enjoyed listening to you.
I'm sorry, sir.
You have done a superb job of explaining everything that took place, and I actually understood it.
Well, my boss is sitting in the back, so I appreciate that.
I'm trying to, there is probably one thing I don't understand. I guess probably my reading of that was that essentially the third-party administrator agreed with, it was insurance would pay, and I thought they were going to pay the full 102.
The lesson, you go ahead. I was just going to cut to the chase. The lesson is when you get something, get something right.
Yeah, I'm not sure we understood, at least at my, at my level, that this was not a replacement cost policy. It was paying for the current value of the unit at the time. And so that was some confusion there. And as the county manager said, we would have been good to get that in right.
Oh, do we need a new third-party administrator?
So that really goes beyond the General Services scope here. I know our HR Director, Shannon Hutchins, is here, and they administer the county's insurance coverages and policies now.
She's standing right behind you.
And she's behind me.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So about your question about the TPA, that is currently under bid. So we're bidding that right now. We've gotten some proposals back, and we're in the review process of that. But to address the question or the comments about the insurance, we have talked with our insurance consultant, and the vast majority of personal and commercial auto policies are on actual cash value instead of replacement cost. There, so there is a program called the Volunteer Fire Insurance Program. Most insurance companies will not insure for replacement costs. But there is this program, the Volunteer Fire Insurance Program. We are working with our insurance consultant to see if we can get quoted for the coverage, but it's, it's highly unusual to be offered the coverage. It's generally done with some volunteer fire departments who have, who don't have the means to replace a vehicle. So under this program, you know, the replacement would only be applicable to ambulance or fire vehicles only. It's not clear if this type of insurance would even be beneficial for us. We would have to see what we could get, if we can get it, and what that cost would look like.
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll, we'll study it. I think what we're going to find out is the cost of insurance is going to be really high. And we are, we've got sufficient reserves, and we've got a sufficient mechanism there. What, what happened in this case was a debate about what's replacement cost versus repair cost and some of that.
Well, is it not true in the sort of, I'm talking about just sort of personal automotive bill, automotive insurance? I know nothing, I know, I could write what I know probably on my thumbnail. But the point is, I thought that once, if the, if the vehicle's declared totaled, then they're going to play, they're going to pay this fee that's going to be, well, what a comparable one would be, and it's kind of based on that. But, but when they agree to fix it and say it's not totaled, I thought they paid for what it costs because they usually would get, and they sort of handle it, you know, the insurance company's handling it, sort of says, you go to here, these are our guys, they're going to do it, and they're going to pay the cost. I thought where you really lost money on those accident deals is when it was totaled, it was worth a lot more to you, particularly than what you would get in the payment back. You really couldn't go, had a hard time replacing that. But I was trying to apply that same analogy. If it wasn't totaled, then they should have been agreeing to the paying the cost.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, for, for an organization our size, the idea of buying replacement cost coverage for everything that we have would be way out the roof. And so, and we've got a better financial plan and mechanism. So we, you know, I think we're getting ready to talk about it. We look at those deductibles every year, and, you know, what we, really what insurance is for us is, particularly with automotive-type insurance, is really just a financial plan. What do we do when something's going to get damaged, and what do we do when it happens? If you try to fully insure it, you're going to probably pay way over.
I understand that. I won't belabor it. I'm done.
Yeah. Yeah, but this was, this was a tricky one about, was it totaled, was it repaired, what happened? So, all right.
Just before we move on, let me just make sure I understand what happened here. So serious damage, chassis totaled, but we pay Northwest with the box on a new chassis.
That's correct, sir. It's very similar to what you would contract for a remount. The box was okay, little bit of damage. And so we basically bought a new chassis, and we then paid them to put that on there. Yes, sir.
And we knew we had a $25,000 deductible, so that was paid upfront.
Yes, sir.
At this point, the insurance company has settled with us to pay us $62,000 of the remaining cost, but we owe Northwest about $103,000. So this is to pay Northwest what we still owe them.
So you, right. So we had a $128,000 invoice from Northwestern. We paid our $25,000 deductible directly to them. Then the county manager authorized us to pay the balance, and now Travelers is going to pay us directly then for the settlement cost, less our deductible.
The only reason it's in front of you right now is I didn't have authorization to spend that much money. I need, we needed y'all to authorize it. Otherwise, you wouldn't have heard this at all.
Which makes sense. I just wanted to make sure I understood. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. All right. Item 20 is a vehicle matter as well. Scott Angel's going to come up and review this. It's a resolution awarding and authorizing a contract for the purchase of five Nissan Sentra cars out of some COVID money. I'll go ahead and say that.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Board. General Services is requesting approval to purchase five 2024 Nissan Sentra sedans for use by the Public Health Department. The purchase of the vehicles was planned for by Public Health within their projects and is being funded with proceeds received under NC DHHS agreements. And as a point of correction, the information in the agenda item indicates that all the funding for the vehicles is COVID-related, when actually, two of the vehicles are to be purchased with COVID funding, and three of the vehicles are to be purchased with environmental health funding under the agreement addenda that Nicole briefed earlier. So I just wanted to clarify that those funding sources for the vehicles. Two of the Sentras will be additions to the fleet and assigned to new public health positions. Three Sentras will be replacement vehicles and assigned to food and lodging division staff. All five Sentras are in stock and available at Modern Nissan here in Winston-Salem. The unit price for the Sentras, including options, is $22,738, which is based on the bid awarded to Modern Nissan by the North Carolina Sheriff's Association. So this resolution awards a contract to Modern Nissan LLC for the purchase of five Nissan Sentra sedans with options under the terms of North Carolina Sheriff's Association Contract 22-08-0913RR in the total amount of $113,690. So with that, the fleet manager is here along with me, if you all have any questions.
Any questions for Scott?
This is, this may be a dumb question, but I'll take the risk. Why Sentras? I mean, that's not the, the budget version of the Nissan sedan. It's a Versa. I drive a Versa. Why do we need Sentras? Just-
Yeah, I think, I think the fleet manager kind of made this recommendation and really worked it out with the public health staff. I think they're initially looking at actually a mid-sized sedan, which are Malibus, and determined that they could actually get more vehicles for their money going with the Sentras. So that was the kind of the determining factor, I think, that made them decide to go with those.
I mean, maybe they need a slightly larger sedan than the Versa, for example. I'm just curious. Okay. Thank you.
I wonder, Versa's on the state contract. We'll check it out. So.
Yeah, we'll check. Yeah, for sure.
They're great cars. We had one. It was fantastic. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
All right. Very good. Item 21 is resolution awarding and authorizing execution of a contract with AA Security Services for security services at county parks. Constantine Stomati with Parks and Recreation will review.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The item for your consideration today is a resolution authorizing execution of a agreement between Forsyth County and NA Security Services for unarmed security services at all county parks. On February 29, 2024, a request proposal was issued directly to 32 businesses in addition to city-county general solicitation. As a result of this action, we received five bids and opened by city-county purchasing on Tuesday, March 19, 2024. Following an internal discussion and evaluation, NA Security was selected as the vendor with the most responsive and responsible firm, providing the lowest cost for the required services. The agreement is for three years, and the county has the option to renew the contract for two additional years, for a maximum of five years. The net change from year to year is a $9,000 decrease, or a 4% less over the previous contract price. And we already reflect that number in our requested budget for FY ' '25. And with this, I will be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Are there questions?
I wish Chairman Mark was here to hear the $9,000 decrease, but okay. Yeah, well, I'll make sure he knows that. Great job, Constantine. Thank you. Yep. And last but not least, I think John's always at the very last of our meetings, but it's not because we don't think you're awesome. It's a resolution authorizing execution of an amendment to the agreement between Forsyth County and Vincent Valuations.
Just happy to be here last or not. Thank you, and good afternoon, Commissioners. Your approval of this item would amend a not-to-exceed portion of a contract we have with Vincent Valuation for real estate appraisal services related to the 2025 countywide reappraisal. The not-to-exceed portion would increase from $100,000 to $175,000, and that would cover us to the end of the rest of the year. In the current year, these funds are being covered by our salary savings within tax administration. If you remember, we talked about this back in November when this started. And as part of the result of this, when we have vacancies in appraisal staff, Vincent steps in with their staff to fill those voids. And we are not filling the positions that we have that are vacant during this time period. So that's the funding mechanism currently.
Okay. Questions? Thank you.
Thanks, John. And I was just reminded, because it was actually not on my list, but it is on the printed agenda. Damon's been working with the folks at, at the North Carolina State around cooperative extension and the agreements between them. And so Damon will review that.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Chair Whiston-Hutton, Commissioners. So Forsyth County contracts with North Carolina State University for employees to staff the local Cooperative Extension Office. This office administers a youth 4H program, family and consumer sciences education, and agricultural consultation services. NC State has updated the 2007 memorandum of understanding with Forsyth County and seeks a new agreement to confirm the financial responsibilities between Forsyth County and NC State University for the NC State employees at Forsyth County's office. Currently, there are several different payment arrangements, salary splits, and benefits determinations that make this program a challenge to administer. A couple of NC State employees receive county health insurance benefits as a grandfathered provision from the 2007 MOU. The county contribution toward NC State employee compensation ranges from 33% to 100%. And currently, the county provides merit adjustments on its percentage of each employee, and then longevity in entirety to employees. Over time, this causes a spread in compensation from employee to employee between the county share and the state share, increasingly growing on the county side because our benefits have been richer over the last period of time. And the longer somebody's here, the greater that spread becomes. So in the memorandum of agreement that the Commissioners are considering today, the county would move away from this arrangement and to a more consistent and logical payment arrangement. NC State employees will receive state benefits and health insurance. The county will pay an agreed-upon reimbursement rate at the time of hire, and that won't change. Current employees today, their status will be unchanged, but as employees terminate, resign, or retire, they will be replaced with employees under the set payment arrangement. County staff have been in correspondence with NC State, and they understand the direction the county staff is proposing and are ready to manage their employees under this new arrangement in the event that Commissioners approve the memorandum of agreement as it is. So with that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Questions? Very good. Thank you, Damon.
All right. Last item, unless there's anything else, is just the closed session motion.
Go ahead.
All right. Need to ask the board to consider a motion to go into closed session to consider a matter relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body, including agreement on tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations pursuant to provisions of North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A4. Since there's no other business to come before the board at this meeting, following the closed session, the meeting will be adjourned.
You made approval by Commissioner Bessey, second by Commissioner Linville. All in favor, raise your hand. We are adjourned.